Good evening and welcome to the Beaumont Special Meeting Workshop. We're here at 350 Brookside Avenue in the Beaumont Unified School District Meeting Room. If we could, today is Wednesday, February 24th, 2016. I'd like to call this special session to order at 6:05. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Roscoe. Councilmember Knight.
Here.
Councilmember Condon.
Here.
Mayor Proton White.
Here.
Mayor Latta.
Here. No action, no excused absences, so if we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation by Chaplain Jerry Westholder.
Mayor and council, again thank you for this privilege. Father God, as we gather this evening as a city to make plans, many people have many different opinions, many people are very passionate about their view. Father, we pray for a spirit of unity and understanding and respect for one another's views and respect for one another's understanding, and may this auspicious body, the people's choice by election, may they come to good and godly decisions that concerns and takes care of everybody. We ask your angels to watch over them and guide them. We ask for protection and we ask for favor. And Lord, I pray that also the communication is clear with clear understanding, that everybody can feel comfortable when they leave, no hurt feelings, no misunderstandings, no frustrations. So anoint these leaders tonight with wisdom and grace and favor. I ask this in Christ Jesus' name. Amen.
Ms. Gibbs, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
We don't have any conflict of interest or disclosure to report. We have public comment period. Any one person may address City Council on any matter not on this agenda. If you wish to speak, please fill out a public comment form provided at the back table and give it to the city clerk. There is a three-minute time limit on public comments. There will be no sharing or passing of time to another person. State law prohibits council from discussing or taking actions brought up by your comments. With that, we'll go to action item number two.
Mayor, do we have any?
Mayor, we have three speakers.
I'm sorry?
We have three speakers tonight.
Ah, excuse me. I'll go ahead and open public comment at 6:09.
First speaker, Robert Johnson.
Hi, good evening. My name's Ron Mycel, I live over at Four Seasons, and I'll be real brief. We're still trying to deal with the Melrose that we talked about a couple of weeks ago, City Council also talked about on Monday night. I'd like to know who allowed Cahoff to go ahead and penalize people that are retired, that are not working, that are on a fixed income, to have such a high tax bracket? You know, I have a small house and I pay $5,000 a year for tax, and I pay about $1,800 a year in this ridiculous Melrose. So I'm hoping that we could all get together and figure out what's going on and how to reduce this so people can actually live and enjoy life. We raised our kids and we pay taxes for schools. Also, I've got another, just one more question. Did the former City Council members sign a document providing a Melrose on a penalty of a lawsuit? If someone could get back to me on that, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Next speaker, Judy Bingham.
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. Thing before this city starts talking about growth, we might want to talk about the financials. The city's financial statements have been forged for years. It is impossible to move forward until there is an honest assessment of the present. Assets plus liabilities equal owner's equity. The city forged assets and neglected to record liabilities on the financial statements to give the false impression that the city is solvent. 2.15 million IOU from the RDA to the city. This number completely forged in 2012 to give the city the appearance of assets that did not exist. $70 million in sewer machinery and equipment. There was no machinery and equipment purchased. All of the money was funneled to Urban Logic Consultants. The following are a list of the city's liabilities that have never been budgeted. Liabilities are Western Riverside Council of Government Judgment, $60 million, and growing by $8,200 a day. Once the judgment is final, the city will have 10 years to pay. Sewer plant, $70 million to comply with the State Water Quality Control Board by 2020. Three fire stations, $18 million today plus $9 million a year to operate. $8 million agency funds from fiscal year 2014 Financial Audit Page 80. $3 million prepaid Melrose taxes, where is it? Repayment and penalties for illegal use of state resale license, cost unknown. Cost of State Controllers Investigative Report, estimate $100,000. Arbitrage owed to IRS, cost unknown. Maybe you better solve some of these problems before thinking about growing.
Thank you for your comment.
No further speakers.
With that, I'll go ahead and close public comment at 6:12. Brings us to action item number two.
Thank you, Mayor. At the direction of City Council, we're here tonight to talk about growth management in the city of Beaumont. This was brought before, this topic was brought before council back in around November, and council directed that staff hold a workshop with City Council and invite key community members of the community as a whole and stakeholders in the area to have a constructive debate on growth and the future of growth in Beaumont. So tonight, we have with us our city attorney, John Pinkney, and Bob Patterson, also with Slovak Baron, M.P. Murphy and Pinkney. We also have our financial advisor, Michael Bush, here tonight, and our planning director, Rebecca Deming. Rebecca's going to give a short presentation on what we believe to be a comprehensive presentation on all of the factors involved in growth, and then we'll be happy to take questions from council at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So first, I'm going to talk about a little bit of the history of building permit data within the city of Beaumont. I apologize that this isn't as clear to the audience. It is on a handout that is available on our website that shows the building permit data, both single-family and commercial. This one is specific to single-family. It shows that our highest year in the last 11 years was 2,295 permits in 2005, where our lowest in 2011 was 169 new single-family home permits. If you average all 11 years, our average over that period of time is 723 single-family home permits on average. I created this chart so that you can kind of see where that average line lays among the three high years versus the lower years. Based on last year's of 157, we are predicting about 500 home permits this year. We have a new builder in Fairway Canyon that has started to build their models, so that's a new builder coming online. And based on the projections from, what we understand from the developers, 500 seems a good approximation. One of the key maps, next, is our general plan to determine our densities in different areas and the plan. The Beaumont General Plan is a blueprint for the future planning and development of the city. The general plan indicates the city's vision through programs, policies, and plans. This one was approved in 2007 as our current general plan. This is supposed to be a guide for public and private decision-makers to refer to the general plan to formulate decisions with respect to land use and development. Beaumont General Plan consists of both an integrated and internally consistent set of policies and programs that address the seven issue areas that the state requires local plans to consider. These are land use, circulation, housing, noise, safety, conservation, and open space. The general plan states that a post-2030 conditions assumed under this general plan, build-out scenario predicates a resident population of approximately 107,200 people. Next slide. The housing element is one of the mandatory elements of the general plan. It is the one that we are concentrating on. It specifies the way in which the housing needs of the existing and future residents can be met. The law acknowledges that in order for the private market to adequately address housing needs and demand, local governments must adopt land use plans and regulatory systems which provide opportunities for and do not unduly constrain housing development. The Regional Housing Needs Assessment, RENA, from 2013 to 2021 stated that we have a program objective of 3,279 homes. Scroll down. These are broken into different construction objectives based on income. We have an objective of 20 extremely low units, 50 very low, 80 low, 969 moderate, and 2,160 above moderate to give that total of the 3,279 units. There are goals and policies listed within our housing element. It designates that sites that fully meet the housing needs of all income groups as quantified by SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments Regional Housing Needs Assessment, that we designate those sites. This map shows the three main designated sites in purple, right here, here, and here, which is the multifamily zone designations. Those are where a majority in our higher-density areas are that are able to facilitate the needs within the RENA numbers. Another goal is to facilitate the construction of a maximum feasible number of housing units for all income groups. It also lists policies. These policies designate sites that provide for a variety of housing types, implement the community development element of the general plan and the zoning ordinance to achieve adequate sites for all income groups, implement adopted specific plans, and there are five regional projects that have development agreements within the city of Beaumont that have homes to remain to be built. These development agreements include Sundance, Fairway Canyon, Tournament Hills as one. It is one specific plan even though it is separated by two developments. Four Seasons, Heartland, and a future project, Sunny Cal. I've indicated in red these development agreement areas. This is Sundance here, Four Seasons, Heartland, Fairway Canyon and Tournament Hills, and Sunny Cal. The units listed are the units that are predicted to be remaining within those specific plans. These numbers are based on calculations we did last year, so it is a little high just because there were homes built in this last year for the ones under construction. The development agreement for Sundance is set to expire in 2029. The development agreement for Fairway Canyon Tournament Hills is set to expire in November 2027. The Four Seasons is set to expire in 2018. Heartland is set to expire in 2018. And Sunny Cal will expire 25 years after the date of annexation. There are about two major projects that have no development agreements that do have track maps approved within the city. These are Noble Creek Vista's, which has 640 units permitted within the specific plan, but based on the expectation and that the fact that a big chunk of the project was purchased by the water agency, we are probably only going to see approximately 550 units in there. And then Cookwood Ranch has approximately 371 units in it. There are roughly a handful of other tracks throughout the city, very minor infill, 25 units here, 30 units there, one with, I believe, just under 100. So I guess made it about 300 units and other minor infill track maps that have been approved by the city. Do we want to go into development agreements now?
Was it my turn? Yeah.
Can you go back up? Two more slides, please.
So the next item, we're on number three now?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda that we're going to be discussing is item three, Presentation and Discussion Regarding, I'm sorry.
Yes. Impact of Existing Development Agreements and Bested Rights.
And Bob Patterson from my office has been working on this and preparing for the discussion tonight and reviewing California law on this subject and is going to be covering this item.
Good evening. My name is Bob Patterson. As John mentioned, I'm an attorney in the firm of S.B.E.M.P. I'm a real estate attorney. I've been representing public agencies for over 25 years, cities and various districts. The subject of growth control is quite complex, but I think I'm going to be able to give you a sort of overview of the growth control, the laws that govern growth control, so that you will have a adequate understanding of the sort of basic concepts. This is sort of a growth control 101 presentation, if you will. It's not intended to be a detailed discussion of all of the various legal elements. That would be beyond the scope of the meeting tonight. It would take a lot of planners and attorneys on a panel to go over the, all of the facets of growth control as they relate to development agreements and other issues. So this is intended to sort of capitalize the subject for you so that you are better able to understand and make decisions as decision-makers. And the first sort of guiding principle that I'd like to talk about is the fact that in California, growth control ordinances have been approved by the courts. That's just a very basic statement. One of the, actually, the first big case in California was the Petaluma case that most of our developers are undoubtedly familiar with and that you may have heard of as well. And there's a quote from the Petaluma case that I think is very telling about what growth control is intended to accomplish. By the way, another word for growth control that is probably more politically correct these days is growth management, which has a slightly different meaning that I'll get into later. So the quote from the Petaluma case that I'd like to bring to your attention is this. And so I'll start. "It is within the power of the legislature to determine that the community should be beautiful as well as healthy, spacious as well as clean, well-balanced as well as carefully patrolled." And so what this really underlines is that, of course, development is an important right, but the people living in the community have the right to a community which they feel is beautiful and which gives them a quality of life. And I think that is something that the planning profession is involved with, and it is a valid, legitimate goal of the city. And so that's kind of the backdrop for the growth control ordinances. It is the rationale without which these growth control ordinances cannot exist. So the concept here in legal terms goes as follows. Growth control ordinances must be supported by findings of legitimate public health, safety, and welfare concerns that are furthered by the ordinance. So any growth control ordinance is going to need to contain evidence that it is intended to further one of these legitimate interests of the city, not simply to exclude people from the community because the decision-makers don't like outsiders. And so let's talk about some of the permissible goals that cities can further through a growth control ordinance. And I've taken these out of published opinions. There are a large number of published legal opinions of appellate and even the California Supreme Court on this subject. So one of the legitimate aims that the City Council can attempt to achieve through a growth control ordinance is to preserve a city's small-town character. Another would be to preserve open space in the city. Another would be to preserve low population density in the city. Another would be to further the desire to grow in an orderly and deliberate manner, to create a balance between the different classes of housing, such as multifamily and single-family. This is something that's going to come up later on, as Rebecca was talking about with the SCAG numbers, the various types of housing that the city must accommodate under state law. That's an important aspect of growth control that is mandatory and must be complied with. The other, another goal is to create an attractive aesthetically pleasing environment and to protect the environment, to protect the air and the water and the soil, to prevent sprawl, to avoid social and environmental problems, and to preserve scarce or marginal resources like water, sewer capacity, or transportation facilities. Now, the developers in the audience probably are saying, "Well, what about us?" And they would be right to believe that they have a place at the table, too. These legitimate public health, safety, and welfare concerns must be weighed against the right of people to develop land and the need for housing, which are very important public policies in California and throughout the United States and elsewhere. Another important public policy that the city must consider when making such a decision is the right to travel and the right to work. Individuals have a right to migrate throughout the United States and come to a community where they think they can achieve their highest potential, where there may be the best jobs, the highest standard of living, where their relatives live. And so a city needs to take that into account, too. They can't just slam the door on people who want to migrate to the area for economic or family reasons. And so a growth control ordinance must weigh, sort of in a balancing sense, must weigh these public policy considerations for health, safety, and welfare against the right of individuals to travel and to work and the right of developers to develop and the need for housing in the region. And if that balance is done in an appropriately tailored way so that you're not giving too much weight to the health, safety, and welfare rationale, then you can have a valid growth control ordinance. In order to do that, it requires a lot of discussion. There must be adequate evidence on the record to show what the rationale for the ordinance was and why the restrictions, and there can be many different restrictions, why those restrictions were needed in order to accomplish these goals. So, there's another, once you have this balancing process in mind, there's another important issue to keep in mind, and that is the rights of your neighbors. The city, when it adopts a growth control ordinance, in order for it to be valid, it has to take into account these various factors that I've just discussed on a region-wide basis, not just the city of Beaumont. The courts have held that the analysis needs to be done on a region-wide basis. And so what that means is, you know, let's say you have a number of close cities and there's an immigration of people, there's a lot of development going on, and one city decides, "Well, we're slamming the door shut. We don't want any people from outside to settle in our community." And as a result, the infrastructure and the housing is overburdened in the neighboring communities. That type of a growth control law might be viewed by a court as being invalid because the City Council presumably did not adopt a region-wide approach to analyzing the effects of the growth control ordinance. So that is another important factor that needs to be taken into account. Another overriding concern when considering growth control is the state housing law. And Rebecca was talking about the state housing law earlier in the presentation. She was talking about the housing element and the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, RENA. And if you look at her presentation, you will see that the city of Beaumont is, and I don't think it's incorrect to say, it's mandated by the state of California to accommodate extremely low, very low, low-income, moderate income, and above moderate income. And of course, there are areas of the city that are designated for that purpose that have higher-density housing availability. And so any growth control ordinance or growth management ordinance needs to be harmonious with these numbers that the city is required to make available. And that can be done in a variety of ways. There can be, and there typically are, exceptions for low and moderate-income housing, exceptions for senior housing from growth control ordinances. There are different approaches to having this, these housing needs being, you know, consonant with the ordinance, but if your growth control ordinance does not allow for the low and moderate-income housing to be accomplished, the growth control ordinance could be held invalid by a court of law. The other thing that the growth control ordinance must do is it must be consistent with the city's general plan. And Rebecca was talking about the general plan earlier. The general plan, you know, is kind of the roadmap for development in the city. The zoning ordinances are a more detailed kind of guide for how to develop within the city. And the two must be consistent with one another. Typically, when a growth control ordinance is adopted, the general plan is amended at the same time so that all the various components of the general plan are harmonious with this new piece of legislation that you've adopted. And so what are the potential pitfalls if they aren't? Well, if your, if your growth control ordinance is inconsistent with your general plan, you could be involved in a lawsuit. One of the remedies that's accepted in these types of lawsuits is an injunction against the issuance of further building permits, which is obviously not a good thing for the community. So this sort of underlines the need to have professional planners and lawyers who are working on the ordinance to assure that it dovetails with the state housing law and so that your general plan is also consistent with the zoning laws. Now, I, in connection with preparing for this meeting tonight, I looked at growth management ordinances, which is the word that's used today. The courts call them growth control ordinances, but municipalities now typically call them growth management ordinances. And I reviewed a number of these. Any of you can find these ordinances by getting online and doing a Google search for growth management ordinance. There are cities all over California that have adopted them. You know, the Bay Area is an area where there are many You know, the Bay Area is an area where there are many growth control ordinances because of the push of development from the San Francisco area into those communities. And so, you know, Petaluma was one of those. They pioneered growth control back in the 70s, and they continue to have many, many growth control ordinances. And they are varied. There are all kinds of different mechanisms that are used for growth control. I think that, you know, sort of the, the idea that a lot of people have is growth control is what you, you pull a number out of the sky and you say, "This is the number of building permits that we're going to allow to be issued in a given year." These growth control ordinances, the, the more modern, cutting-edge growth control ordinances, are far more complicated and nuanced than that. And let me talk about some of the components of the typical growth control ordinances that I've looked at. You know, one of them is an infill exception. Typically, you know, because the growth control ordinances are designed to deal with urban sprawl, they typically oftentimes accept infill development with the idea of making certain that the city center gets filled in completely. There's often a multifamily exception, and that would be related to your SCAG housing numbers that you need to comply with. There's often a senior housing exception. Another important thing to note is that these growth control ordinances do not apply to commercial. They are, they deal with residential building permits. Sometimes they're time-limited. You know, if a city is in crisis, if there isn't adequate, you know, roads and transportation, for example, and the city sees the necessity of imposing a limitation, they might do so on a time-limited basis, so that they can then re-study the issue at the end of, say, five years and then modify the ordinance or, or maybe leave it alone. Another type of mechanism that many of these growth ordinances contain is a, a green belt. I know Camarillo and Petaluma have these, and it's an area outside of the city where development is not permitted and where agricultural uses are to continue. Typically, the growth control ordinance operates through the limitation on the issue, number of building permits that are issued. Another type of mechanism in some growth control ordinances is the so-called beauty contest, where the building permits are issued based on a beauty contest that developers engage in. And let me just say right off the bat that, you know, the commentary that I have read is that the beauty contest model is not one that has been highly successful for a number of reasons. But let me talk about it a little bit anyhow. You know, what the staff does is it has a sort of scoring system for each of the projects that are proposed to, to get building permits at the beginning of each year. And they look at the, the architectural design, you know, the more attractive the, the development, the more points it gets, the conformity of the general plan, whether or not it contains low and moderate-income dwelling units, what kind of recreational facilities it has, and then the location of the development. Is it in the center or is it on the outskirts? Obviously, trying to avoid sprawl. And so, they have sort of a scoring process that they go through, kind of like you do in an RFP process, and then they select which developers are going to be allotted the, allowed building permits based on this scoring system. And, you know, the scoring system can be subjective, and so, that is one of the reasons why some municipalities moved away from that system, but it does still exist. Now, the really important issue here, I think, that is on the agenda, and, and what I'm going to conclude my discussion with, is the interface between vested rights and growth control. For those of you who aren't familiar with the concept of vested rights, vested rights is a concept in land use that essentially says that at some point, a developer has a vested property right in a development that cannot be restricted or taken away without due process of law. And if it is taken away, then it could be a taking, under the takings clause of the United States Constitution. The, the commonly-accepted practice with regards to growth control in California is that it should not apply to a development that has vested rights. Vested rights can exist in three situations. Number one, could be a development agreement. And we've looked at the development agreements in the city of Beaumont, and the ones that I've looked at, I think I've looked at them all, they contain different clauses that, it's not the same clause in every one of them. They're all drafted a little bit differently, and they basically are drafted in a way that they are intended to be exempt from growth control ordinances. All right? The other two types of vested rights are vesting tentative tract maps. I don't know how many of those the city has. It's a statutory animal that was introduced in the 90s through special legislation. And then, the third type of vested right is a final map, where the developer has spent considerable sums of money on improvements to the land and where at least one building permit, not grading permit, has been issued. So, our advice and the common practice and belief in the land use community is that those types of projects cannot be subject to a subsequently enacted growth control You know, it goes without saying, during Rebecca's discussion of the development agreements, that, you know, there are significant parts of the city that are affected by development agreements. And I think that covers everything. Oh, I have some examples here of different kinds of growth control mechanisms. Santa Cruz has a limitation that's based on a percentage. They have a 2% limit on growth. And Davis has a, a ordinance that says that ag land cannot be rezoned for development unless voter approval is obtained. That seems kind of drastic to me, but that's what they have chosen. And so, I think you can see that, you know, even based on this Growth Control 101, it's a complex issue, probably something that merits a great deal of attention by the, the city council if they're going to move forward with something like this. And the city council might consider a committee that would be charged with meeting and allowing members of the public to participate, to come up with some kind of a plan that would make sense for Beaumont. I think that any plan would need to be specifically tailored for Beaumont and should be done with the assistance of legal counsel and planning professionals also. So, that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
I just want to add to Bob's comments that I want to be clear that my office is not advocating for growth control or against it. That's a decision that's between the council as elected officials with input from the various stakeholders in the community. But our objective was to provide you with a framework of the law in California as it affects growth control.
We're going to talk about financial impacts of growth management, and so, our financial advisor, Michael Bush, will speak to that.
Good evening. My name is Michael Bush. I'm the chief executive officer for Urban Futures, and I'm currently the city's interim financial advisor. This is one of the rare opportunities. I actually have an undergraduate degree in urban planning, so this is it. I get to use it once, so I can talk a little bit about some of this stuff as it relates to the planning side, and I'll, I'll do my best to tie it into the financial side. I've done some research, knowing this item was going to come up, and I looked at a lot of growth management ordinances and, and read a lot of studies regarding the impacts. So, I want to point out a couple things that I think are, are important. Growth is typically managed through a general plan, and you have a general plan that's been adopted. I don't believe it's, it's very old. In fact, I think it's less than 10 years old. I'm looking at it. Looks like it's March 2007. In planning school, they teach you that there are seven required elements. They are land use, housing, circulation, open space, conservation, safety, and noise. The one element that is not included is a financial element. And it's pretty common where you'll see organizations will add elements to their general plan. This is the required state mandated elements, and other organizations typically can add economic development elements, public safety elements can be expanded a little bit further, but a fiscal element seems to be more popular these days. The purpose for that is to identify opportunities to ensure that your general plan is actually sustainable. Can you implement what is proposed and pay for services related to the development activities? Oftentimes, communities pursue what's referred to as fiscalization of land use. They make land use decisions based on the ability to generate tax revenue. It's very often used for retail, commercial-type development activities. Those activities are really important to your ability to manage your service-level requirements as you develop further into build-out. Your general plan also can control growth, or, or what we refer to as sprawl, by allowing for, you know, in some cases, more density development that allow for more infill in certain areas. There can also be methods to build in certain areas. There can be incentives for that as well. Ironically, another way that a lot of cities manage growth is through impact fees. And you guys obviously have an impact fee program. Impact fees are used not for infrastructure that's currently in place, but only to capture the infrastructure needed as you grow. So, it's for new facilities. Can't be used for existing facilities. This city has quite a few impact fees that it charges related to development of all types. A little bit earlier, there was a discussion about health, safety, and welfare, and, and one of your constituents talked about solvency, so I want to talk very briefly about that. As the council is aware and, and your constituents will, will be aware, I am currently the financial advisor assisting the city of San Bernardino through its bankruptcy. Our argument to enter bankruptcy was the protection of health, safety, and welfare. We didn't have a lot of debt to restructure, but we couldn't provide service. The city was service, cash, and budget insolvent. And so, that is a component of how you manage these things going forward. I do have some concern going forward with any type of restricted growth for, for a couple of reasons. First of all, the reduction of one-time revenue would hurt the city pretty dramatically as it tries to work through its issues. The city is not in a position, currently financially speaking, to wean itself off of one-time fees or to even limit what those may be. It's, it's a common phrase, rooftops lead to retail development. Well, that's just a small component, and I'm sure you've heard that phrase many, many times. The reality is, retail development comes where retail development can be supported. It's supported by more than a number of population. There's many cities that have populations much larger than Beaumont but still struggle for retail development. What makes Beaumont unique is your average household incomes are significantly higher than most, and I think that, that will attract some individuals. However, I do think that a reduction or a proposed reduction in development activity could persuade developers to maybe look elsewhere in fear that there'll be further restraints on their opportunities or in their build-out plans. We see it all the time where we're asked, as we go through development agreements or proposals, you know, what the population growth is, what the expectations are, what disposable household incomes will be or what they currently are, and that's all factored into the investment by developers and bringing new development to the city. I think another thing that's important to point out, and this goes back to Prop 13, most cities in California, when, when Prop 13 was put into place, were either very small cities at the time, not growing very large, and their tax rates were frozen at that point. And so, I think it's important to note, as we talk about growth in the city, the assessed value, based on what I can recall, of the city's growth is almost $4 billion. I think it's about $3.6 billion. Of that amount, of the 1% that's charged for taxes, the city's tax rate is about 12 cents of that dollar. So, not a lot of money comes in. Most of it goes to the county, into the schools. In Riverside County, I believe we've shared this with the council in prior meetings, Riverside County, there's a, a master annexation agreement that also impacts your ability to, to retain property taxes related to development. The agreement basically states that for, for property annexed into the city from Riverside County, the county will retain a majority of the property tax going forward. That makes it very difficult to grow the city and provide service. How you've accomplished moving forward, you have a services CFD. It's very common in Riverside County that that's how people are, or cities are making up the, the difference between what they can retain in property tax or what they would receive in other taxes, such as sales tax or TOT tax or utility user tax. They're making it up through service CFDs. In Riverside County, not to pick on Riverside County specifically, but there's quite a bit of increase of fees going on with all the cities. There's a significant increase in public safety costs. What we're seeing in other cities is those service CFD costs are going up substantially. And the other night, we talked a little bit about the automatic escalators of CFDs. There are cities in Riverside County that are proposing 5% increases in service CFD costs annually, just to keep up with the cost of providing service. I don't believe that, that you can grow your way out of some of these issues, but I do believe that they can be managed. I do believe that there's a, a fiscal element to working through these things, and I think it's something that needs to be considered. If I had a choice, I, I would make the fiscal element a required element of all general plans. Oftentimes, what we see is cities that have a substantial amount of residential development are those that have the greatest amount of CFDs, service CFDs, assessment districts, because there's no other way to fund services. Beaumont is similar to some of those other cities. I think what's ironic about a growth management plan, and maybe your attorneys have found the same thing in the readings, ironically, growth management plans increase housing prices. Makes it harder to have affordable housing, because there's fewer units that are available at any one time. It's ironic that that's, that that would be one of the fallouts of some of these plans. I think the, the city has some difficult times ahead of us. We've got to work out some of the issues related to the city's general fund balance. Hopefully, we can do that. I think the drop that you'll see in permits, I'm going to, I'm going to guess is a result of the subprime mortgage issue that we had as part of the recession. There's 90% of subprime mortgages were adjustable-rate mortgages, and they were, they were not collateralized appropriately, and so, we had a big loss of, of that type of activity in the market. I think that's slowed down residential development all by itself. You're not seeing the volume that you used to see, and so, what people are searching for now is more affordability. They're moving to areas where they can afford to live, and they're willing to commute for those that are working from those distances. I think you, you have the same issue here. Ironically, in Southern California, and in actually, I guess, the whole state, there's a recession in California every six and a half years. Clockwork. Seems like every time, every seven years is a recession. What has brought the, brought the state out of recessions numerous times in the last 40 years is housing development. So, you need some development. It's necessary to pull, to pull the state out. That's not to say that growth leads you through solvency or solves all your problems, but it is an indication of the economy and how the economy grows, specifically in cities where there's a lot of development activity. The other issue that, that crossed my mind in looking at this stuff, and I've seen this in, in cities prior to the recession, they have to plan ahead for residential growth or any type of population growth, and oftentimes, they invest And oftentimes, they invest pretty heavily in infrastructure. During those times of slow growth, the residents of the city pay a burden, a majority of those costs, which can sometimes be a burden for that growth, because it's not spread across a larger population. Very common when you have water or sewer plants. Water treatment centers are the same thing. You're required to have a certain amount of capacity. You plan for it ahead of time. And if residential development slows down or doesn't grow as fast, the rates are paid by those that are currently here and can't be spread to newer development. So when you have some of these growth ordinances that slow down or stifle development a little bit, that could mean that utility rates are spread to fewer people and could be higher over a period of time. I think the same thing goes for water rates. I think the same thing would probably go for any type of service that the city provides citywide. I do think that as we go forward and we start looking at some of the city's issues, and through the workout plan, a big component of our work in dealing with the workout plan is going to be to look forward. So we are going to be providing the council a seven-year forecast, based on the current budget, the mid-year budget that you adopted. We'll be making some assumptions on growth. But part of that workout plan is to ensure the city is service solvent. So during this process of our workout plan, we're going to generate and create ideas and options we plan to present to the management, as well as the council, for discussion. And hopefully, those items will be baked into your budget when we go forward. So we're going to address a lot of the issues that we're talking about as it relates to service or cash solvency as part of that budget process. I think that's necessary, that we do that as one item. That process will take quite a bit of time. It probably will not be an easy process. There'll be a lot of tough decisions, I think, for the council to make as it looks and weighs those options. But we're going to assume going forward, and I think it's a good strategy going forward, to assume that there'll be some level of continued growth in the city while we work through some of these issues, both those that are related to day-to-day service, and including possibly settlements with other groups. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Before we do that, though, I'd like Rebecca to just finally touch on the last area that we'd like to talk about, and it ties into what Michael was just speaking of, and that's service levels. What are our service levels right now for police, fire, and sewer? And what do we project out to the year 2030 for service levels in those three specific areas?
So I gathered some information from the different departments and agencies. I put this chart together for the police department based on an average of 500 new home permits a year. We came up with that number, even though it's lower than our 723, because, as it was mentioned, we don't really foresee the huge ups anymore due to mortgage issues. So 500 seemed, you know, some years there'd be less, some years there'd be more. 500 seemed a pretty good average. Obviously, it's completely unpredictable over a 15-year period, but that seemed to be the average, based on the recession and cycle. So with that, we took the population estimate that we were given for 2015, and took an average of 3.2 people per household, and created a population estimate from 2015 to 2030, and estimated the number of sworn officers that were needed. I was asked to note from the police department that although this says we need 42 officers for 2015, currently the department is authorized for 38 sworn officers. The fire department provided me information that said that the city of Beaumont is currently served by two city-funded engine companies, and supported through a regionalized delivery model by an additional two engine companies. Demand for service has increased dramatically with the growth realized by the city over the last decade. And as the city has continued to develop, average response times have increased. Although no population-based formula exists to determine station construction timeframes, generally speaking, one station tends to support approximately 15,000 residents. However, the orientation of the community service may affect average response times, which must serve as an additional factor. The city currently needs one additional fire station to reduce response times to the western portion of the city. As future development occurs, additional facilities will be necessary based on emergency response volume and appropriate response times. Based on the regional approach embraced by the city and its neighbors, a minimum of three facilities should be funded by 2030. I also put something together regarding our sewer plant, and what was expected based on the same 500 average new permits a year, at 280 gallons per day per home. I apologize, this was too small to read. I was unable to make it bigger here in the screen, which basically shows that an increase in capacity is performed in phases, showing that the next phase in capacity would be approximately in 2020, and then the next phase after that in capacity would be in 2028. And that's all I have.
So in conclusion, Mayor and council, I'd like to remind you that this workshop is an informational item on the agenda. It is a receive-and-file, but there's four options that council, that I'd like to share with council, that you can choose to do going forward. The first option is, take the information from this workshop and do nothing. The second option is, work with staff and the city attorney's office to develop a growth management ordinance to be voted on by council, or placed on the ballot for a vote by the electorate. The third option is, address growth management issues when the city updates our general plan in the coming year. And the last option is, create a sphere of influence policy that addresses growth management. And that would be for the sphere of influence, which is outside the city limits right now. As a reminder, this meeting is an opportunity for the council to interact and hear from key stakeholders in the community. And so with that, we'll turn it back over to council, and this concludes staff's portion of the agenda.
Thank you very much. And as a reminder, there's public request to speak forums at the rear of the facility, in case you haven't gotten one yet, or you need one. We'll go ahead and take questions from council. Councilmember Knight?
Mayor, may I make a suggestion about process before we start the questions?
Sure.
Because I don't think, two nights ago, people understood. I don't know that we had a process outlined at the start, but we had one that worked, which was that we ask our questions, then the public asks their questions, and then we can follow up on some of their questions.
Okay.
Can we do that again tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Mayor Potemway?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Deming, this one is for you, and it's in regards to our general plan and the update. I know that these types of things are very, very expensive. And I guess I would ask you, what's it going to cost us to update our general plan? And then, as the after, and maybe Mr. Bush, put in the fiscal element added to that? Because what I'm hearing tonight is that, basically, we need to add that to our CFD, right? Is that correct?
Well, not adding it to the CFD, but it's an important, I think, to add it to your other required elements, because it'll determine whether or not your general plan, as it determines build-out, if it's solvent, physically solvent.
Okay, okay. So what kind of costs, I mean, are we going to get into?
I got an estimated cost when we were preparing this last budget for a comprehensive update to our general plan. So there's obviously different costs, based on whether you're doing a minor amendment. If we just add a very simplified and add the fiscal impact or fiscal element, I estimated in the first year, it would be about $350,000 to start a comprehensive process. There would be additional fees in the second and possibly third year, depending on how many scoping meetings we needed, and how many community meetings we held. A majority of the cost is based on the environmental documentation required for the plan, not the actual plan itself. So I wanted to make that clear.
So the environmental is what's going to cost?
It's the biggest portion of the fee, correct?
Okay. And then, another question on our general plan. We have some green belts, do we not? Or set aside, I know wildlife?
That is correct. There is a conservation element to our general plan that designates the green space. A majority of what you see will be our parks, the Edison easements, and then the larger open space to the south of the city.
And that's all I have for now, but I do have some more questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Knight. Mayor Potemway?
Okay. Real quick to follow up on that, Ms. Deming. The general plan has to be updated every 10 years, correct?
It is recommended we update it every 10 to 15 years.
Okay.
The only section that has a mandated, required timeframe is our housing element, which was updated in 2013.
But our plan has been to update it by 2017, correct?
Based on my understanding from the direction of council, we have been working to meet that request, to get a comprehensive update through the budget process.
And that's regardless of what, if any, growth ordinance passes, correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Bush? My undergraduate degree is economics, so I'm going to ask you about some numbers. Okay? Because I know you're also the finance person. But first of all, since 723 is the average homes, let me make some comments first. 723 is the average home since 2008. Since, I'm sorry, since 2005? Since 2008, it's been 345 homes. Ms. Deming, did you come up with the 500 homes?
It was a number that was used in that sewer plan a while back, the 500. So I used that to kind of estimate, as well as look at the, discuss it with this group, and
Okay.
Figured out that that's not the high, obviously, and it's not the low, but that's a general average that we might expect.
I think it was a three-year average.
Okay. I was at a recent water district meeting, and they were talking about development fees on homes being developed in Beaumont. And I believe the number that they used for the next five-year average is 997 homes a year for the next five years. But my question here is, we have in your list of homes that appear to be vested, which, regardless of the ordinance, I think we, you know, it was brought up by Bob earlier, that those vested ones are exempt. And I think if the Citizens Initiative has an exemption clause in their four vested properties. So that's 7,100 and some homes. At 500 homes a year, that's 14 years to build out those 7,000 homes of 22, a population of about 22. I'm just running some numbers up here. So the 500, so regardless of any ordinance, any restriction, any limitation on homes built, those 7,000 homes can proceed at their own pace, correct? Whatever pace the developers determine, they can proceed. Isn't that correct? Okay. So we could have 1,000, 1,500, 2,000 homes a year. So the 500 is sort of an estimate. And again, the water district was saying it was more like 1,000. So now I'll come to the money questions, Mr. Bush. The tax rate in Riverside County, property tax, about 1.8? Am I close? No, what is it? You're raising your eyes at me.
Well, the ad valorem tax rate is just 1% of the assessed value.
Okay. So you had said 12 cents on the dollar.
Of the dollar that they pay, the city receives 12 cents.
12 cents. And that is before the, that's after the county's got their 3/4 of a percent?
Yeah.
So 12% on a $300,000 home, for example, is about $460, I'm guessing.
That's right.
So that's what we get per home, and the homes we're estimating 3 people per home, 3.1 people per home. So if every police, every new 1,000 population, our goal is to have one new police officer. 322 homes times 360, we're looking at about, my numbers are off, but it's, what's, anybody know what a police officer's making now?
With benefits, it's about $150,000.
Okay. So a new police officer costs us $150,000. We get $360 on a $300,000 home, and it looks like 320-some homes per new police officer. Of these 7,100 homes, I think I already went over, they're all exempt from a balanced growth initiative, as the one the citizens had presented. Are you or Mr. Pinky familiar with the Citizens Initiative? To answer questions with, you know, I don't want to get us into any legal issues, but just clarifications of what it says.
We're familiar with it. In fact, there was an original petition initiative that was submitted. We are required under the Elections Code to review it, prepare a title, and then summary of what the ordinance would do. And then there was an amended version of it, and so, in compliance with the Elections Code, we prepared a title and summary of that as well. And it limits the number of units to 350 per year, with 50 reserved for infill development. And it excludes properties that are subject to a vested development agreement.
And that's the 7,000 homes we've talked about before. Does the balanced growth initiative restrict any low-income housing or senior housing the way it was spoke? You've mentioned it before.
It doesn't address it.
I don't think it addresses it. Let me take a look, but I don't think it addresses it.
And I don't think it also sets a procedure for how the permits are awarded. So they could go with your beauty contest, or any direction council has as far as how the permits are awarded?
Well, actually, it contemplates a lottery system.
Okay. But it doesn't say that it's, well, I don't know. Does a lottery system mean that you, everyone who wants to build can put their name in, and we just pick it at random?
Let me just turn to that section. I'm not finding the language very quickly here, but it contemplates a lottery system, is what it does. The applicants have to submit their applications by January 31 of each year, and there's a lottery system that they use.
But that's none of the development homes?
Doesn't include, my read of it, it does not include the vested rights.
Okay.
Now, yeah, there's some ambiguity in that ordinance, and so I'm giving you my read of it.
Understand.
Well, let me, I just found a section in the ordinance, and it says, "Nothing in this initiative ordinance shall be construed to preclude, prohibit, or limit the city from complying with any requirements under state housing law." So it addresses it, but it doesn't tell you how you're to make the state housing law, or how you're to comply with the state housing law, in light of this 350 building permit limitations. So it would be difficult to comply with.
Okay. The language, I found the language here in the proposed ordinance. It says, "Applicants for dwelling unit permits must be submitted prior to January 31 of each calendar year, and will be evaluated for each project. And approved projects will be placed in a lottery pool for selection for issuance of building permits. Building permits will be issued by the city to those approved projects selected at random from the annual pool."
So the projects would be approved first, and then selected at random? Is that the way you read that? Okay. And I have one last question, two questions. Mr. Bush, you talked about a one-time fee reduction that you were concerned about. Is that the money coming in from a CFD? Is that what you're talking about?
No, sir. That's permit fees.
But aren't the permit fees revenue-neutral, don't they?
No, the city retains about 25%.
Okay. So 75% of the permit fees go to pay for the services that they're being permitted?
Yeah. I think the question is, basically, our plan check fees, 75% go to the, currently go to our plan check consultant.
Okay.
We keep 25% to cover our administrative costs, software costs.
But not our future costs?
But not our future costs.
Just the cost to
Just the cost to process
To process the permits?
To process the plan check.
Okay.
Correct. And then permit fees stay 100% within the city to cover the costs, again, for all of the admin and the inspections in that process.
So with the exception of some of the people who are involved, like you, part of your salary may be paid by the permits. But in general theory, the permits are revenue-neutral?
In a way.
Okay. Because we were told once that we had to make sure we were charging the right amount of fees, that we weren't
Correct.
Making money off of the permits.
Correct. But those permits pay for a portion, like you said, of everyone's salary
Some other salaries.
That's working on the permit. So if you lose half of them, then can we afford another, the inspector needed to cover the other half? So yes, each one needs to pay for its fair share, but people come in So yes, each one needs to pay for its fair share, but people come in a set price.
Okay.
It also is supposed to pay for the other things that we use, a portion of our GIS, a portion of our software system, a portion, everything we use to be able to do that permit. The permit should cover all pieces of that which help pay for the operation of the city as well.
Thank you for reminding me. The presentation tonight had the label of ESRI, which is a company I work for, but we had nothing to do with producing that?
I produced it completely.
Okay, so I have no conflict of interest, correct?
No conflict.
No conflict of interest, okay. And my final question, I think, is to you, Bob, or maybe Mr. Pinkney, and Bob, I'm sorry, I don't remember your last name.
Patterson.
Mr. Patterson. Ordinances are treated differently by the courts, depending on whether it's a citizens-initiated ordinance and a city-initiated ordinance. Not only are they treated differently by the courts, but there is also a different process and requirements that the city has to go through, environmental issues that the citizen initiative would not have to go through. I do understand that the city would have to defend either ordinances, whether it's a city ordinance or whether it's the citizens' ordinance, because if it was passed by the citizens, you work for this, the city works for the citizens, and therefore, they would have to defend it. So can you speak to that real quick, and then I'm done?
Yeah, I can kind of touch on that. I think you're right that an initiative has a little bit more horsepower than just the standard ordinance. I think that's, you know, probably an oversimplification, but there are, there is case law that suggests that the power of the electorate, of the voters, through the initiative power is special, something very special, more so than, you know, with all due respect, a ordinance that's adopted by a city council. Now, how that interplays with the issues that you've got going on here, I'm not sure that there is any published opinion that tells you exactly what that initiative power is, or how, how it differs from that of the city council's power. Now, one thing I will say is that, uh, the, you know, you were talking about SEQA, but in terms of a growth control, I'm sorry, a growth control ordinance, um, under the government code, the, if the city council is going to adopt a growth control ordinance, they need to make specific written findings that show those health, safety, and welfare reasons, and how they are furthered by the growth control ordinance. In an initiative, that isn't the case. Those specific written findings do not need to be made. Now, there's a fine distinction there, because with an initiative, although the written findings don't need to be made, if there is a challenge to the initiative, the city and its attorneys must be able to articulate those reasons anyhow in a court of law, and say, based on some sort of evidence, that, well, you know, this growth control ordinance will assist in improving the quality of life and the aesthetics of the community. So the difference is that the initiative doesn't have to specifically have a list of written findings, although it probably should, and I think this one does contain some findings, but in a city council ordinance, it absolutely must contain that written information.
But we learned in Moreno Valley recently that as, when a city, when a city council passes an ordinance, without it going to the voters, the next city council can change the ordinance?
Can override it, yeah, that's another, another aspect, too, and that is that, you know, as I said, the, the voters have a little bit more juice than the city council, and so consequently, the, if a law is passed by the initiative process, the only way for it to be amended, or superseded, or changed, is by another initiative.
But if a city council?
Yeah, I'll get to that.
Okay.
The, the city council can't override an initiative. The city council, if it passes an ordinance, the, the next city council, as you say, can just wipe it off the books, and so there's no permanence to it. But with an initiative, it's going to require another vote of the electorate, and therefore, it is, there's a higher bar, it's more difficult to undo.
But if a city presents an ordinance to the voters?
Right.
It gets the same protection that a citizens' initiative would get, but the city would have, would have gone through the environmental processes of vetting it before it went to the ballot, correct?
Right, yeah, you're right. When, when that kind of a process is used, it allows the city to have more control over the process, to assure, for example, if they were going to adopt a growth control ordinance, it would allow them to assure that all that, the, all of these various criteria that I discussed in my presentation are properly complied with, and then it can submit it to the voters, and that way, they can feel confident that if there is a challenge to the ordinance, the city council knows that they did their homework in advance, and that they're going to be prepared in the event of a lawsuit.
Okay.
The, one of the potential issues with initiative is that if the initiative proponents do not have planners and lawyers, unfortunately, we live in a world where, you know, you need to have professionals who are involved in this process, and if you have an initiative that is flawed, maybe in a tiny way, it might wind up costing the city hundreds of thousands of dollars in, in legal fees and lost opportunities to defend.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Protimway. Councilmember Roscoe?
I was going to let Dr. Condon go before, if she wants to, ladies first.
No, go ahead, I'm listening.
Okay. A lot of questions, a lot of good questions were asked, I just wanted to ask a couple of follow-up before I ask a couple of mine. I'm glad you mentioned, one of the questions I was going to ask is in terms of, and you answered that, and I wanted to kind of reiterate that, is the fact that, possibility, if, if we were to, um, take on this mission and accepting and moving on forward with the initiative that was presented by the community, it could most likely be challenged and go through long process of legal battles. Like you said, spending costing us, what, over thousands of dollars?
Hundreds of thousands.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars over time. Work could be better spent and better used. I had a question for Mike, Michael Bush. In regards to impact fees, how far, how much are we allowed to increase impact fees, if necessary, to, to compensate for some of the challenges that we're facing with infrastructure or other costs that we see, we foresee?
That, that's a good question. Rebecca and I were just talking about the specific impact fee you have for the general plan update. It's $50 per unit. So if your general plan costs $600,000, it would take 12,000 units to fund a general plan update. So we assume that the mitigation fee is basically a pro-rata share. Obviously, new development shouldn't pay for all of it, but I think $50 is probably too low. So it's my understanding that the city has an RFP out now for a, a fee study, that's a master fee, I think, for all things. And I think we may have actually discussed this when we were presenting the original budget. Best practice is to do a fee update every year as part of your budget. Every year, your costs go up, whether it's for Pers Retirement, or overhead for running City Hall or something, you've got to constantly update your fees, just for the basic operation of the city on a regular basis, very minimum, probably every three years, but a best practice, I think, would be to just update it every year, once you know what your budget costs are going to be.
Have we done that?
No, you're going through the RFP now, and you'll start that process.
When was the last time that it increased?
We did bring one back last year to, and, and offer, and looked at options to go to like the deposit-based system, so it was in the last year that certain fees were updated. I don't believe at that time we made any actual changes to it. There were some impact fees that were changed, like the fire station that you guys saw, but there was no, just like 2% across the board due to increase in costs that went into there. One of the reasons, I believe, why is, is for this RFP to have a full study done before any of that moves forward. And it's due March 16th, the RFP.
Yeah, and I, I understand it needs to go through that process and stuff, I mean, it's, I mean, basically vet it out and evaluate it and the impacts.
I think there's two components to your question. One is the user fees, people come in for permits, the other, I think, is the more mitigation fees that you're talking about.
Yeah, absolutely.
So the city needs to update its AB 1600 report, which is mitigation fees as well. Costs go up, and it needs to be adjusted for either the construction cost index or CPI index on a regular basis. But as part of that process, you have to do an inventory of what's needed, and it, it all ties back to your general plan. So the fiscal element that I'm talking about is somewhat of the bridge between your general plan, what it costs to operate the city, and the other fees that you'll be, you'll be assessing over time to make sure your plan is feasible financially.
And I, I know you've got experience working with other cities, also Riverside County as well, and you've probably seen more of it, and that is, uh, fees in regards to service fees and towards fire and safety. Are you seeing that more often in, in the county?
Well, I'm seeing it often with new development.
Okay.
Pretty consistently now.
Now, are those developments, when, those amended, are they amended in the general plan, added in the general plan, updated, or are these just based on only new development that's not in the agreement here?
They're typically negotiated with development agreements. When they come forward to negotiate development agreement, usually those are included.
Okay, what about the existing agreements?
I've seen them rarely, I've seen them amended, development agreements amended. It's not something you can require, but as you amend your fees, it will become a standard condition of approval, for example, that they would annex into a service district that the city would set up. So any new development, they would come forward and, and go through the development process of, of exercising its ability to enter a development agreement with the city, one of the conditions would be that it would annex into a service district.
That's a whole new, whole new animal with the annexation.
And, and that brings, that, to the point that you're making, if you have an old service CFD, and we've talked about this the other day, about 93-1, it's an old rate. It isn't current, and so I assume in 1993 or 94, when it was created, a fire, a policeman wasn't 150,000. It was probably 75,000. So times have changed, things are a lot more expensive, and you need to, you know, there needs to be an update. It's pretty, pretty common for cities to have multiple service CFDs, for example, so as new development comes on, they pay their fair share, and there's not burdens placed onto the community that's been here for a while. So it's, it's pretty fair and logical that you'll see one development will have a higher service CFD, just based on when it was built, and what the service costs are at that time for service to be delivered.
Yeah.
I also want to point out that our development agreements, as far as I've reviewed and understand, that they do not lock in impact fees. So they, all of the developers are paying the current rate impact fee.
Okay.
Not the one established when the development agreement went into effect.
Yeah, a couple more. I think it's more of a kind of a statement in terms of, after I've been hearing conversations and comments that were made by our staff, too, as well, I know that we do really need to revisit our general plan, and then, like you said, you know, and start including, I think that has been the mistake of, of growing cities, is that they don't include their, a financial aspect on that, and I think that's going to be crucial. I would like to see it more than seven years, especially if you put it into a general plan, you're going to match it up to the, to the idea of a, of a general plan, so go even a little further in terms of within it. But kind of evaluate the city as a whole, we need to do that. I think also in consideration of taking a look at the, the initiative that was proposed to the city, we're, we would be already spending thousands of dollars on doing a general plan. I think it would be smart to include the stakeholders, all stakeholders, including from the initiative group, to sit down and to, you know, I know that's going to be one of the options that we're going to be looking at, but you have this ex-urban mentality, people want to go in a different direction and halt everything, or slow it down, and there's a lot of side effects and effects unintended, you know, consequences that comes with it. But I, I see this issue as going to be problematic down the road, because we're a small town, we have a small budget, limited staff, and most importantly, limited financial resources. If we have to deal with such legal, you know, using those resources to defend such an initiative, while we could be using that money for other purposes, like a, a workout plan for our general plan, and including those aspects, doing something really big for our city, sort of a, you know, having a small time field, but a big idea for our city, I, I think we need to put all our resources into that, and I think it will work out for everybody involving all stakeholders as well. But we all, we all have to start with a vision, and I think in 2016, with the elections coming up, I think the community will have that opportunity, especially as if we're considering the general plan and 2016, 2017 budget. Is that correct? I, I think that's going to give the community an opportunity with the vision up here in the council, with the stakeholders involved, on really coming up with a comprehensive new general plan that I think the new community members in this community, that are here in this community as well, to have an input, because that general plan was implemented in, what, eight years ago? Is that correct?
March of 2007 was when it was approved.
Okay. Kind of going back, you know, I mean, it gives, it gives us an opportunity to preserve and enhance our cultural resources that we have here, and expand on a lot of things that we need to do. But we, I see it as, we're going to have to include all the stakeholders, and you're right. I think, you know, the developers here, the commercial developers, the developers that we have in our community, especially with the agreements that we have in place, they're going to be here for a very long time. Don't you agree? I mean, they're invested in this community, and I think involving and kind of taking another approach, instead of battling back and forth as we see fighting going on in Moreno Valley, I think it's very unhealthy for that community, because the direction's just going everywhere, and, and it's constant battle. I think we can avoid that, learn some lessons through, through history, and take a different approach on working with our stakeholders, on coming up with a, of a sustainable solution that's going to benefit the residents. I think, just kind of going towards a question to you, too, Michael, because I know through your experience, you're the expert here, don't you, wouldn't you agree to kind of go through this approach on getting the stakeholders involved, instead of going through battle after battle, pulling teeth, where we can come all together with the stakeholders involved? I'm talking about the developers and everybody around, even the county, on coming up with a, a better plan?
It's a standard practice that you'll have a, a committee, a general plan committee that works together to, to provide, you know, recommendations to the council.
I mean, I-
You would include all stakeholders typically in that process?
Mm-hmm.
You know, business community, the development community, BIA will probably want to be involved in that as well as some of the local residential leaders.
I, I would think it'd be their benefit and interest, and I don't think, you're right, you made some good points in terms of, I don't think we're going to see an increase what we saw with the housing market, that for a very long time, or not at all, if the market is the way it is because of the mortgages. But I think from what I'm hearing from, from my colleagues and from the community, are we going to be able to sustain ourselves with fire and infrastructure and services down the road as we, you know, we can't grow our way out of this, but we can plan our way out. And again, I'm just going to reiterate, it's, it's going to involve some huge stakeholders, and it's going to be a give and take. They're not going to be able to sell homes if we can't sustain ourselves, because no one's going to want to buy here. I think it's going to be, like you said, a regional effort as well, because it's just not, we're not the only people here, you know, in this region, and it's going to take our neighbors as well. This is, I think, a working effort to work with our neighbors. Passing such an initiative at this point is, is just going to rock the boat with everybody around us, including the folks at the county. I think if we take another approach, like I said, I think it's going to look a lot different, maybe more pleasant, more viable, more sustainable financially as well for our resources.
And I think you make a good, a good point. As you're aware, the council has engaged Mr. Bob Dyson in my firm to prepare a workout plan for, for the council, and working with the city manager, we have tied the workout plan to the budget schedule, so they'll be presented concurrently, and part of that workout plan will look at solvency- concurrently. And part of that workout plan will look at solvency and sustainability. And the seven-year forecast that we refer to is to prepare a forecast, a financial forecast for the council that will give options to the council on decision-making as part of the budget, which will lead to solvency over that seven-year period.
So I mean, I think it's good that we're asking you all these questions. It's important. I don't think none of us here are economic experts. No offense, Councilman White, but experts in practice, instead of just academia of a practice. And I think you've seen all that. So I appreciate your, you know, your information and your expertise here. So thank you.
You're welcome. I mean, fortunately or unfortunately, you learn a lot going through bankruptcy, municipal bankruptcy. And, you know, when I was a CFO in a city, it was pretty common to do straight-line forecasts. Every year it's going to grow, every year it's going to grow. It just doesn't happen that way. And so I'm a little surprised, and not to raise issue with the water district, but to assume every year there's going to be 900 units, like clockwork, is just seems--
Yeah.
Yeah. It just, at some point, there's going to be less, a lot less. And being prepared for that, being sustainable, having a resilient financial practice at the city is going to be really important to weather through that. As Rebecca's pointing out, you have to retain your professional staff even when permits are low.
Right.
So you've got to build up some level of reserve to get through that period of time. There's still going to be units pulled, will be in fill development, but it won't be, you know, 600, 700 units, you know, in a year. It may be 100. I think in your down years, they were about 150 one year or something like that. So it's bound to happen again at some point. We should be prepared for that. And the purpose of the workout plan and the forecast is to make sure that you're prepared and you have a resilient approach.
And that our general plan addresses that issue if it comes up again. I think most general plans with other cities, including ours, may not address that growth again. So I think having that in there will be important. But one last question. Rebecca, if it's possible, if you can communicate with the water district in finding out how they got that number, working together in terms of, this is one example, that we need to be working with them and--
I will. And I do want to clarify that the 169 is not total permits. That's just single-family homes. We still have lots of other patios, solar, and stuff that, you know, that goes on in a year that inspectors have to inspect as well. So--
I want to add one other thing. As part of the budget process, when we were brought in last year, we worked with Rebecca and Kyle. And one of the revenue sheets that we asked them to fill out is permit revenue specifically. And so as part of that process, your staff reaches out to the development community and will ask, like a survey, how many permits do you plan to pull? And so we can ask for a forecast for multiple years and that information will be made available to you as part of the budget process.
They predicted about 50 homes a year per type of project. So if there's different planning areas, it might be up to 50 homes per planning area or per group of homes. So not per developer, but per project.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Excuse me, Roscoe. Councilmember Condon?
Thank you. I just listened very carefully to everything everyone was saying this evening. And I want to reflect on what I did this weekend. I went through the community and I looked at the new homes and the older homes that have been built in this area. And they're really lovely homes. And I can see the families in those homes are enjoying a good quality of life. I appreciate the fact that developers have invested money in our community. The thing that concerns me the most is that the infrastructure needs are not being met. And we have to find some creative ways to make sure that the infrastructure keeps up with the building, that from what I see is quality building. And we start talking about things like service CFDs and the facility CFDs, and we know who's paying for that. And that's the homeowner, the taxpayer. And if Prop 13 taught us anything, it taught us that there is a level at which people will say enough. And to start adding service CFDs in this community, I know there are some, but to add more to finance, fire, and law enforcement, I believe we are going to get that same reaction. And it's my opinion that this initiative that's being brought forth by the community is a symptom. And it's people saying that we don't want to be taxed for more infrastructure. I don't necessarily think it's an objection to the quality homes that have been built here. I think it's the infrastructure needs that they see running out. And I think, why are we at 70% capacity in our sewer plant? So we've got to do some creative things and we've got to find every way possible not to put more burden on people that live here on a fixed income and young families. So it's going to be a difficult task for us, but I think it's one that we're up to.
Thank you, Councilmember Condon. Michael, I have a question for you. Have, when you go back and you look at the master property tax agreement that we have with the county, is it possible to go back and renegotiate that prior to any future annexations so that we can get maybe 15 cents on the dollar? It's supposed to fund, I mean, there's a number of facilities it's supposed to fund. And it also states that it's supposed to help keep the city solvent, yet it doesn't do that when you look at the, you know, the $360 that Mayor Protim White mentioned. So obviously, we're not going to get that way through taxes unless we can negotiate at least a portion of that.
I agree. I'm looking at the budget timeline that we sent to Elizabeth and a couple of comments made by the council. Part of our work, we do plan to present a service solvency assessment and a line of service assessment. We've already started working with the staff on that. That'll be part of that process. In addition to that, we're going to be presenting cost-saving opportunities and looking at revenue options. And that may be one of the options. I could tell you from personal experience, when I worked out in the Coachella Valley, we were, the city was paying a tax on, for example, for library. We were able to determine what that tax revenue was. And then working with the county, we were also able to determine what the cost for the library was. It was about $1 million less than the revenue they were receiving. And it created dialogue with the county about, maybe we should provide more library service. And that was a positive relationship. I think we got to start breaking down some of these revenues specifically and look for those types of opportunities to improve service.
Thank you. Rebecca, on track maps, when they're approved and you have your final track map, you can't change anything within that track map by revising the general plan. Is that correct?
The general plan doesn't usually, has policies and, you know, goals. It doesn't have necessarily the specific requirements that that map has to meet. The zoning ordinance is where that occurs. There are times when you can require a change. For instance, the map that went to you guys this last time, because they use the automatic extensions through the state, they are subject to new requirements. So we changed their minimum lot size to meet the current standard in that final map as a condition of approval. So it depends on the kind of vesting. It depends on the kind of map and where the change is. Will depend on, you can't just have a blanket change. But for instance, on the last one, there was a change in minimum lot size and we required them to uphold in their final map when they go to record it to meet that new minimum lot size.
Okay. And then, you know, we've talked about the estimating the number of units. I think if you pull it out and add 500 units for next year, your average drops to like 709 units. And that's been one of the things in my job with the county that I struggle with, is trying to get some type of a consistent estimate because it's pretty much a roll of the dice. And I think you get better odds in Vegas on predict the estimate of what it would be. On the general plan, we can have a general plan encompass our sphere of influence, those areas that are not yet annexed. Is that correct?
That's correct. Our general plan covers the entire sphere of influence area, where our zoning ordinance only covers area within our city.
So it's, it'd be great to get out in front of that and--
Correct.
Get that addressed early.
That's where we designate the expected land use through our general plan, land use plan, in the sphere of influence area.
Okay. Do overlays, is there ways for those to help us with this by working with developers and trying to manage growth through overlays? Or is that not the proper use for that?
It's possible. Usually overlays are done for hillside or other issues. I don't know that I've ever seen one that works to limit it that way. It's more of a, there's a physical area that has limitations. And so you create an overlay for that area to make sure that, like I said, hillside policies are met in a hillside overlay area.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Knight, you have another question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rebecca, excuse me, Ms. Deming. Our general plan right now is basically balanced, is it not? Basically.
Balanced is a good question. I think that's answered if we had a fiscal element.
Right, right.
It addresses areas of mixed use of commercial, of residential, and of residential of multiple density. So we have all types of uses, whether more commercials needed or less residential. That's really a decision that goes through in that update process and reviewed through the scoping meetings in the committee and the council.
Well, yeah, I'm all for that. I think that's the way to go. And the financial element. And, you know, it quite possibly won't take a lot to change it, looking at different issues that the community brings up. Is that correct?
I believe that the direction that I've heard from you guys is not just a minor change. It's a comprehensive update. So I would say that it would take a lot to do a complete comprehensive update to hold all of the meetings. A lot of times, after the 10-year period, there's not much that has changed in cities. And so they have minor updates, which don't take much, don't cost a lot. Usually, you don't have to do a full EIR. But if we make a lot of changes to it based on all the input, then it would become a comprehensive update and would require more.
Like, at what kind of cost do we know we're looking at there?
As I mentioned, that the cost we estimated is for a comprehensive update because that was--
600,000?
Approximately.
Okay. I guess there's one more thing that I am concerned about. And it has to do, and I guess I can say I am not supportive of the initiative that's been brought forward. The heart of it, I understand. But I think that the money amount and the potential lawsuits and the issues that we'll generate from that, I think, are beneficial to us right now. I think they actually will harm us financially. We're trying to get our stability back right now. And so, you know, if we can do, look at our general plan, I'm with that. But I do believe, and it has to do with unintended consequences of doing things and not recognizing everything that is involved. And that is, we have long-term investors that have come into the community, invested based on our general plan. So if we change it hugely, those unintended consequences, and I would like to hear a professional retailer on this, you know, those investments in our community are based on speculated growth. And this has an impact on our school district. I mean, huge, huge impacts that are unintended in the sense of, I understand that wanting less home, I understand that. But the unintended, this is an example. We got a letter here from one of the developers that has been in our community for years, Mr. Hanshaw. And this is what he's worried about. We're currently working with many fine national retailers who feel the city of Beaumont would be an excellent fit for them. And what have we wanted? You know, the excellent fit is based on projections of income, spending patterns, and growth of the community. And right now, what they're looking at is a luxury cinema tenplex. And that's across from Walmart. And so, you know, those are some of the things I'm looking at. And I'm very concerned. I just want to make sure that we do it right because we've already spent a lot of money doing this right here. I think it's been worthwhile. So we have this dialogue. So that's where I am. And thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Knight.
I have a question. I know it's the school district here, and I just wanted to ask a question, if I may.
Quick, to, who are you asking it to?
School district, if it's--
Why don't we wait for them to do public comment?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
What do you mean, wait?
Well, we're going to do public comment. I'm sure that they have comments or--
Kind of a way maybe we'll lead towards a response. If I may, I don't know if you can answer it, but if I can go ahead and, if something was to take place in terms of initiatives of this sort, would the school district have to go back to take a look at their general plan and maybe having to amend or relook at what, I mean, I know, let me go back here. The school district just recently came up, revisited their general plan recently. Is that correct?
Always? Can you come?
The microphone.
June and Lindsay, Director of Facilities and Planning. The facilities master plan was done back in 2013. So it's always evolving, and we change it consistently, pretty much annually. We look at what we've done and base it on growth and things like that. So yes, we're looking at it now. And when you're talking about a general plan, it's a facilities master plan that we update as we go once to see what we've done based on that plan. So is that, does that answer your question?
Yeah. But kind of going back to the initiative here that was kind of presented to the community, something like this would have consequent effects. Would this be a serious impact to the school district in terms of having to go back and revisit some of the anticipations and--
It's not only going to affect the facility master plan, it's going to affect our--
Numbers.
Our school design, site locations. I mean, it affects a number of things. So yes, we would be looking at our enrollments, our projections. And there's numerous things that it would affect.
That would come out of the general budget for the school district?
That I--
Yeah, I don't-- Well, it's important because you need to consider that the taxpayers, the residents, are getting affected through the city with us. Then at the same time, the taxpayers are getting burdened through the school district as well. I think it's important to take a look at that, you know, residents, if we were to make a decision, we're getting affected, you and I, on a multiple aspect. And I just wanted to clarify because some of us may not know that if we have to revisit, the school district had to revisit their plan, they may have to incur cost as well. Is that correct?
Yes.
Would that come out of the general budget? Or would that come out of, like, impact fees or other fees that you guys collect?
Well, it would affect a few. The developer fees would obviously be changed because we do collect developer fees on new development as well. And also the general fund, yes.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment at 7:55?
Mr. Mayor, can I just make a brief comment? There's been discussion about the initiative and members of the council expressing their agreement with it or disagreement with it. We've addressed it briefly as your legal counsel. But I wanted to clarify something. And that is, the petition, regardless of what occurs here, may go forward. If it goes forward and they collect sufficient number of signatures, then it will come to you from the registrar of voters. And at that time, your options will be to approve it, adopt that ordinance without any changes to it, as is, or to put it on the ballot for the voters. So my understanding from the council meeting where this-- So my understanding from the council meeting where this discussion first occurred, and the concept of having this workshop was raised, was that one of the objectives was, if that initiative is going to go forward, does the council, with the input of the community, want to discuss the idea of a, an ordinance that everybody would buy into in the community, all the stakeholders would buy into, that might be, and also address some of the legal issues, the concerns that we have. A better, a better ordinance that addresses everybody's concerns, might address the financial concerns that Mr. Bush has raised, the planning concerns that your planning departments raised, legal concerns that we've briefly touched on, and then the input from your stakeholders in the community.
All right. Thank you. So with that, do we have public comment?
Yes, we do. Our first speaker is Jack Vanderwood, with Steve Melman to follow.
Well, Mr. City Clerk, while Mr. Vanderwood is approaching the mic, we did get written correspondence that we will need at some point to read into the record.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Jack Vanderwood, Redlands, California. We've been active in development in Beaumont for about 36 years. Currently have a residential project directly across Brookside, running down to Oak Valley Parkway. But I wanted to speak, if I might, about economic and financial matters very briefly. Mr. Bush touched on a matter I thought was most apropos and interesting, and kind of tied to where my comments are coming from. And that is the fact that you have a pretty high level of average family income in the city of Beaumont compared to some of the surrounding communities. And that's one of the reasons that Beaumont has been doing so well with economic development, the attractiveness, attractiveness of the cities to people who generate economic development. But I want to caution, if I might, with respect, city council and the community. Hold on to your hats, because that's not going to last too much longer if this proposal to mitigate growth in the city of Beaumont goes forward, okay? There are communities adjacent to the city of Beaumont that are aggressively pursuing development tonight, as we speak, yesterday, today, and tomorrow. We are involved with a project that I think Rebecca may be touching on in a moment, that's about 42 acres down on Oak Valley Parkway at the freeway. That project at one time had letters of intent from people like Supertarget, major theater chains, a lifestyle center with theaters, Trader Joe's, and other highly desirable major retailers who are looking at Beaumont with great favor, okay, for the reasons we just touched on. We start looking at, call it what you will, forgive me, but a de facto moratorium, because that's really what it is. These folks are going to go elsewhere. Just up the street, a mile up the street from where we are today, is Interstate off-ramp, as you know, Cherry Valley Boulevard, beginning the city of Calamasa. And it runs up to County Line Road. There are massive plans in Calamasa, as you may know, so I may be preaching to the choir here, but please forgive me. But you're talking about something like 7,000 new homes approved and moving forward on the west side of that freeway, between County Line Road and back down to Cherry Valley Boulevard. Paralleling that freeway on the west side is a street you may be familiar with, called Roberts Road. City of Calamasa has just very recently applied to Western Council of Governments to expand Roberts Road to a major arterial highway. Why? For, because it parallels the freeway. They see it very much like Palm Desert, if you will, a Gucci Gulch of the Eastern Empire. They see that as a very attractive site for major hotels, theaters, lifestyle centers, et cetera, coming down the 10 freeway heading east. And it makes sense. For them, it makes a lot of sense. That is happening, whatever is done in the city of Beaumont, that is happening at one point or another. Forgive me, one last one, and that's to the east Beaumont, sorry, of course. On the east side of Sun Lakes, you have a 648 project there, owned by one of the most powerful firms in the United States, Lennar Housing, third largest builder in the United States, and in partnership with a man named Michael Dell. You may have heard of his computers.
Need you to wrap up.
Sorry. That project is going forward. And adjacent to that, 9,000 houses, south side of Banning, coming. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Steve Melman, with Jeff Chambers to follow.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd first like to thank you for this meeting. We have learned a lot of valuable things tonight. And this is the first time, as I understand it, that much of this has been, has gone public. So people understand what's in the pipeline, how much, how much the city gets from a new home, et cetera, et cetera. Now, I know that most of the people behind me are probably against the balanced growth initiative, which, by the way, is not a moratorium and does not stop growth. Let's get that settled once and for all. But you have to admit, were it not for this ballot initiative being put on the ballot, we wouldn't be here tonight. We wouldn't be learning this stuff. So I think that's very important. I also think it's very important to look at two essential issues. First, is it fair? Is it prudent? Is it wise to invite new residents and new businesses into a community when the infrastructure cannot serve the needs of the current residents? We can't sweep that under the rug. We have to fix that. Now, if one of the developers would like to come forward and maybe donate a parcel of land for a second firehouse, I think that might be a nice step in the right direction. Secondly, and Ms. Condon hit on this issue, and it's absolutely right, do the citizens of this community have a right to be part of the process of determining the future of our community? Or is it just going to be the developers and the council, as it was in the good old days? That question needs to be answered.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeff Chambers with Judith Bingham to follow.
Good evening. Jeff Chambers with Parti Homes. I've been listening to everybody talk, and I'm trying to figure out how much I can say in a short period of time. Parti, as you know, builds communities. We address infrastructure when we're doing our development, when we're working with the city. We work with Southern California Edison. We work with a gas company. We work with Beaumont Cherry Valley Water District. When you talk about infrastructure, we have to work with everybody. We work with the school district. We know for a fact, because we had a meeting last week, that the school district has capacity for the next five to seven years in elementary school, junior high school, and high schools. The way they're doing it is moving hours around, but they have capacity. I'm not certain when everyone talks about we don't have infrastructure. I think that infrastructure is carefully evaluated in every new development. As far as how many homes can be built, we own the rights to build another 1,800 homes. If we can build 250 to 300 homes per year, that's about the most that it's possible to construct. How you get to 900 homes, well beyond my imagination. There's not that many developments underway that could support that type of development. Service CFDs are for new homes only. They, they're not, they don't go back in time and address the people that already have, own their homes. It's for new homes only. As far as fees going up, costs going up, taxes going up, homes become not affordable. The market will dictate how many homes can be built. When it gets too expensive and less profitable, homes won't be built. The good part of development, the median household income in Beaumont between 2000 and 2014 doubled. It's over $60,000 a year. 20% of your population now has a household income exceeding $100,000. 15 years ago, when there were 10,000 residents, the average household income was in the mid 20s at best. New growth increased the median price of homes from 218,000 in 2000 to over 425,000 in 2015. That would not happen without new housing growth. Homeownership increased from 54% in 2000 to 76% in 2014. New schools are being built. We address sewer capacity. That's our, that's a major concern of ours, and we've done a lot in addressing that. And as far as what's been built, Mike Taylor from Parti will address what's being, what's been built with the CFDs. And I have a list of $300 million worth of facilities that are addressed in the CFDs.
Need you to wrap up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Judy Bingham with Bart Hollander to follow.
I have another slip, because I need to ask questions. Mr. Patterson, what are the criminal and civil liabilities of the city and council for refusing to build fire stations and adequate roadways? What are the criminal and civil liabilities for forging government documents to form a joint powers authority? You can answer after I finish. Mr. Bush, by the way, I was around for the general plan fraud in 2004 through 2007. And in fact, that is when it became clear that Urban Logic had serious conflicts of interest. My neighbor and myself started Beaumont Citizens for Responsible Growth. We even hired our own environmentalists to present a truthful EIR on Ernie Eggers hillside ordinance. Urban Logic's control of the city for 20 years was growth inducing. 20 years of fraudulent EIRs have put us in the mess we are in today. Developers made illegal deals with the corrupt city of Beaumont. You need a full and factual EIR. You haven't had one for 20 years. There should be no more growth until the infrastructure is built. Aside from the looming deadline, the major obstacle to Beaumont's general plan are the forged and politically motivated statements that were written into Beaumont's 2007 general plan. The city's planning department has been and continues to be a front for Urban Logic. The 2007 general plans includes a state-of-the-art recycled water facility that does not exist, and whitewashed excuses for fire protection and roadways. The city plans to build thousands more houses, but has no plans to build fire stations, roads, or the recycled water facility, even though Acting City Manager Gibbs, Brenda Knight, and Orozco stood with Urban Logic before Santa Ana Regional Board just last summer and promised they would produce Title 22 recycled water by the end of 2015. What happened to that water test, Mr. Worsinski? I haven't seen the results. What happened to the $70 million in bond debt mitigation fees and taxes that have been collected? I would like statements from Knight and Orozco as to how they have done to fulfill their promised deadline that passed three months ago. The city is supposed to have had, have all contracts and payroll verifications on every contractor in the city, but the city cannot produce any documents regarding the rampant construction of the city's infrastructure. The city must fire Deming and Worsinski.
Need you to wrap up.
As they are nothing more than fronts for the old guard. Hire honest staff.
Thank you for your comment.
And tell this council and citizens the truth.
Thank you very much. Bart Hollander with Bruce McDonald to follow.
Good evening. My name is Bart Hollander. I'm with Rich Development Company, and we currently have a project underway, or hopefully getting underway soon, in Highland Springs and Second Street. And I'm here to just talk about a little bit briefly, just about the growth with respect to retail prosperity and retail development. Obviously, as the community grows, that helps existing retailers within the market, and also helps spur new retail development. And that in turn means more sales tax revenue for the city. And there's obviously a correlation between population and retail demand, and I can talk about that a little bit more. But not only in terms of the types of retailers, such as bringing a retailer like Costco into the market, until a critical mass is reached, certain types of retailers won't consider a market. And then also, within categories, the alternatives for shopping within those categories. For example, there's a Home Depot, but there's not a Lowe's, and until a critical mass is reached, then that second retailer won't come in. And the more alternatives you have for shopping, the more choice you have for consumers, and the more choice you have for your own residents to stay shopping within the city instead of going elsewhere to shop, and creating, again, more sales tax revenue for the city. When retailers are analyzing markets that are not established, fully grown markets, they look at residential studies, much like what you saw with respect to the growth and so forth. And they have models for projecting sales, and takes into account population and income that was referenced, not just purely numbers. But they create a spending demand for their, their area. And then they can base their decisions based on the way the area and the population is growing, on what makes sense for them to consider entering a market in terms of timing, or if at all. And if they can base their decisions on what the natural demand is in the market and what the market can provide, that gives them an opportunity to project sales. But if there are limits, such as in an ordinance or so forth, that limits that amount, then that obviously adds another element and a negative impact on their decision-making and their, you know, determination, the viability of the market. So all in all, the more a community can grow, that creates more sales opportunity on a retail level for retailers and retail development. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Bruce McDonald with Robert Marks to follow.
Good evening. Bruce McDonald with McDonald Property Group. I'm a commercial, we are a commercial stakeholder in the city, and I want to welcome Dr. Condon to this important council seat. I venture to say that no one in this room, or any of the residents that live in this city, have swam in the waters that we're currently contemplating. Not because we're not experienced businesspeople or good leaders, but I think that we have a very unique situation in which the, the oceans that the city has swam in, in the last few years, has been quite choppy financially. And now we have turned the boat slowly, and I've watched and been, I've been very impressed with the guidance that this council has taken to get through this financial recovery that the city has looming. It's impressive, but what is very delicate is when you try to choke a recovery of a community, which we're in the middle of kind of a tenuous economic situation right now globally. But when you try to bring us back to financial strength by manipulating the natural currents of growth, we have to be super careful. And I think the experience that none of us have in this area of recovery and choking at the same time, chokes the word that is pretty dramatic, but we're trying to preserve and balance growth, which is a huge opportunity to do. It's great that we're doing that. I just want to say, let's be extremely careful about it, particularly at the tenuous situation the city is in right now. Because we're doing great on this recovery, and that's because of your leadership. Just a few quick points. Diversification of housing. The exemption of initiatives exempt income, affordable income housing and senior. We have to be very careful that the younger families that are enjoying coming here to grow their family and have good jobs here locally, that we continue to lure that group for a good balance. And I think it breeds unaffordability when you stop the balance in the community of a generation following the work generation that's aging out here. So let's, let's watch that carefully. Another thing, beauty contests for housing in the city takes an enormous human capital time of the staff to go through that, when they could be doing other priorities when we start to limit growth. Let's also look at other cities who have done this. Okay? So there's precedents out there. So if we're going to do a growth initiative, let's, let's look at how... So if we're going to do a growth initiative, let's look at how, what happened there. What were the benefits they gained and what did they lose? So that's super important also. So finally, my position is this. I love what the staff has done. Mr. Peterson and Mr. Bush, I've learned a lot tonight having them here, and I think the meat on the bone of the information that you got from this group was fantastic for me, and I hope it was for you. In the end, I recommend that we address this through-
Thank you very much.
...an overlay of the general plan with a fiscal analysis, and that's my recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Robert Marks with David Weiner to follow.
Robert Marks, citizen of Beaumont, 1204 Houstonia Lane, also employed by Party Homes. Conversation that we're having this evening has significant implications on not only my career, but my family and as a concerned citizen of Beaumont as well. You know, I'm a resident of Beaumont, as just mentioned. I've been selling real estate in Beaumont here for the last four years. It awarded me the opportunity to grow my career. I was recently promoted with the company. I've had the ability to assist hundreds of families become Beaumont citizens here over the past couple of years, many of whom you might see in the room today. I kind of wanted to take a little bit of time to go through some of the things that I've noticed our residents are going through and what our buyers are going through as far as people have talked about affordability. Party Homes has done a great job at building for different segments. We build all the way from 1,500 square feet right now all the way up to 4,000 square feet. Our prices range from the mid-2s all the way up to the high 300s. One of the biggest challenges for homeowners these days is credit scores and down payment. The FHA loan limit in Riverside County right now is $356,000. Our average price here in Beaumont for Party Homes is somewhere in the low 3s. That's a $2,300 payment for an FHA loan. It requires about $11,000 to $12,000 down. Income-wise, that's going to require $70,000 to $80,000 a year income. That's one of the reasons why you've seen the income grow in Beaumont. We've been bringing that to the region. That's with zero debt. And I also am an economics major. I don't have the liberty of having zero debt. I'm still paying for my major. So you add debt to that, and now you're looking at $80,000, $90,000, $100,000, depending on the buyer's debt levels. So limiting growth, although it might raise prices, is taking away from that opportunity. It's taking away from the ability to offer loans like the FHA loan. We're one of the only builders in the area now. You know, we also have developments in Lake Elsinore. It's becoming more and more challenging to service that market. It's one of the last areas that we can do that. My point here is that Beaumont's been an area of opportunity. By limiting growth, we're limiting that opportunity to other individuals, and these are the people that are moving to the area, younger families that are going to spend the money, that are going to go to the cinema that was mentioned earlier, that are going to go to Home Depot, that are going to pay their taxes, and that are going to be here for a long time. It's the future of our community, and we want to make sure that we continue that. That's all I got to say this evening.
Thank you for your comments.
David Weiner with Sean Belinget to follow.
I thought I'd come out from behind the tax wall. It's been a long couple of months already. I had a few thoughts that I, you know, I wanted to share with you. Usually smart growth policies are directions where cities such as us, such as Beaumont, need to go, not growth control or managed growth. That's just not something I believe in personally. Most controlled growth initiatives have good intentions, however, they also have potentially negative and unintended side effects. I applaud the effort, but this particular initiative, I think, will have unintended side effects based on how it's written. It lacks the evidence and data to defend its objectives, and most importantly, it doesn't offer any substantial solutions backed by clear evidence. Are these the experts we need, and do they have a plan? Most importantly, do they speak for the majority of the public? By reducing the supply of developable land, for example, housing and land prices will increase, reducing affordability and production. Local policymakers, you guys and women and citizens, need to understand the nature of these trade-offs and impacts before they adopt the growth boundaries. Growth boundaries, in fact, have not achieved many of their supporters' objectives throughout the state or the nation. Other possible unintended results include, but are not limited to, an increase of taxes to compensate for the loss of revenue and growth or other financial impacts on the community. I have to say I respect the thought and the process that you guys are all undertaking. It shows that you're listening to the voters, you're trying to deliver on what we want to see happen in the city and what's the best way to move the city forward. A couple comments that I picked out. Councilman Orozco, he spoke of needing a vision to help grow the city in a smart direction, which was kind of my first point. I think we need to allow all of you the time and resources to continue developing a vision to see where Beaumont's going to be going in the future, in the next 10, 15 years. And Councilman Knight, you brought up a point that I think is really critical and we have to keep very mindful of. The city, as we all know, is seriously cash-strapped and resource-strapped. Do we want to spend what time and resources we have on an election that goes to the voters or fighting litigation on this growth initiative? I think our answer is clear, and we have better ways to use our resources. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Sean Belinget with Mr. Jaggers to follow.
Mayor Laura, council members, thank you for the opportunity. Sean Belinget, 1705 Lakeside Avenue. Been here nearly 50 years. That predates Sunlakes, Solera, Four Seasons, and probably any developer that's in this room tonight. If developer agreements are outside the initiative and 6,000 to 7,000 homes will be built, then what's the true goal of the initiative? If it's infrastructure catch-up and the 6,000 or 7,000 homes are built and the system is closed, then the cost for that infrastructure catch-up will be placed on the people within the system currently. It means I'll pay more for the infrastructure catch-up. My neighbors will pay more than if we allowed more people in. What I like about the discussion that's going on, and I am glad that this discussion is happening, is that more and more ideas are coming to the forefront. What I heard and what I liked was service solvency. I would ask that the council allow Urban Futures to finish their report, this seven-year plan, and see what impact to the budget that servant solvency will require. I do not believe that a growth initiative is a silver bullet, but may in fact be a dull tool where a scalpel is required. If in fact the petition gathers enough signatures, I would urge the council not to adopt it, but force it to go to the ballot. I believe that there are unintended consequences that none of us even here tonight understand. And I would remind the council that even as well-intentioned as we are or the council is at times in putting ordinances forth, just a month or two ago, the council put an ordinance forth to reseat a council with the best intentions of doing that in a timely fashion. But once that had passed, the next item on the agenda, they were not allowed to seat that council because of the previous action of passing that ordinance. And so as far-sighted as we believe we might be, I don't believe that we always fully understand those consequences. So I would urge the council to proceed slowly, with prudence, and with caution. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Mr. Jaggers.
Dan Jaggers, representing Beaumont Cherry Valley Water District. And I just wanted to make a point of clarification regarding the 900 and some odd units we projected in our master plan update-
Thank you.
...which we presented in January of this year. That was based on reaching out to the local area developers who were active in the community and getting a projection of their anticipated building rates. We did that in early 2015, late 2014. And when we presented our findings to our board in January, we also indicated that the reality of development was probably more on the order of half of that number. And I think we further identified we would bring forth our master plan CIP development to reflect those numbers of what we anticipate the current development was. So from the perspective of the water district, I think we currently feel the development rate of around 450 or so houses is a more reasonable number, and that was identified at our presentation. So we projected a worst-case scenario, so we understood the funding requirements we have to meet the facilities needed to support those developments. Finally, each area is broken down with development by zone, by five-year increment, and when we hit the development in the zone for the five-year increment, that's when the facility gets built. Whether it's five years or 10 years, we hit those numbers, the numbers are what drive our facilities in our master plan. So, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
I have a question. How far are you guys on your master plan for the water district?
It's been adopted.
It's been adopted?
We presented it in January, it was adopted by the board.
Okay. It would have been nice if the city and the water district worked together, you know, to do something like that. In the future, I'm just saying that would have been nice.
It would be tremendous to develop a relationship with qualified staff, certainly.
Thank you very much.
Mike Taylor with Dr. Blair Ball to follow.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just wanted to take a few minutes to reflect on my 15 years working here in the community. In 1999, this was a very different place. Population about 12,000 residents, household incomes below $30,000. The first master plan community was under development at Three Rings Ranch. Home prices were in the low 100,000s when we first came to town, and the city had not seen a new school constructed in almost two or three decades. Parks were old with few amenities. Retail shopping consisted of grocery stores, strip retail, some fast-food restaurants. Sewer and water distributions did not exist for most of the east side of Beaumont, and many of the roadways here in town were at most two lanes. Fast forward 15 years later, more than 10,000 new homes have been constructed in almost 10 master plan communities. We saw home values skyrocket to over $800,000 in 2005. And by the mid-2000s, we all saw what the recession did as it brought values tumbling down as they did all over the nation. But today, once again, we're selling homes upwards of near a half a million dollars again today in Beaumont. The median household income here has risen to over $66,000 in the community. Heard a lot of false statements about the infrastructure developed in the city. Today, more than 20 new parks have been developed in this citywide. There's been a community center complete with a gymnasium and a daycare facility, five new elementary schools, a new middle school, a new high school that we're here today, and a state-of-the-art athletic complex, aquatic complex, theater complex. This district has had the most new schools built in this timeframe of any district in the state of California. The domestic and recycled water systems, which have included two new water storage tanks, five new wells, 20 acres of groundwater recharge facilities, and over 40 miles of backbone water pipeline. Granted, you've heard there's no recycled water in those pipelines, but those pipes are in the ground capable of delivering that. The sewer system, seven operating lift stations in the city, 27 miles of backbone sewer lines are in. Party also removed over 100 homes that were on septic system in the city and converted them over to the city sewer system. Those homes were contaminating the groundwater. You know, I'd like to applaud the people who have come and brought a lot of issues here. I think transparency and mismanagement in the city, we want to see that cleared up as much as everybody.
Thank you.
We're here to work with you guys as much as we can and help you make sure the city's moving forward prosperously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Blair Ball with Ron Roy to follow.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Our newest member on the council, Dr. Condon, I believe has hit the nail right on the head. An initiative of this, as I've read it, is a symptom, and I think the people are tired of taxation and being dealt with in a manner that they have no voice. I think that the words unintended consequences that was talked about earlier by a council member does come to mind, but when those words are said, unintended consequences, my mind first thinks back to the WR COG lawsuit. For everything we do, there's a consequence, and we have to own up to those actions. I think the people, and I've lived here since 1986, not quite as long as my friend, Mr. Belinget, but I have the gray hair to show that I've been here a while. I believe the people want quality of life over quantity of citizens. For example, when this city is built out at 100,000, which was one figure, I don't believe that's sustainable. It's 40,000 now, so two and a half times the growth. And we take our children up Beaumont Avenue, will that road double in size two and a half times? Will it become a four-lane road to get our kids there? We'll have twice the cars, two and a half times the cars. But that road won't get any larger. They're lined by Deodoro trees, historical value. We've got to be thinking of that. I think, I talk to a lot of citizens. First thing they say is, "Great place to come and live." Now how do we stop the growth? It just can't sustain itself. We can't sustain it in the water. Report that the last Beaumont Cherry Valley Water District was, "We citizens are saving, conserving about 20% state mandates that we conserve 35% based on 2013 numbers," and that they won't give us credit for being one of the fastest-growing cities. That means you and I here now have to conserve 50% or whatever the number is. You can do the math. Waste water treatment facility development was going to pay for that supposedly, yet my home built in 1962 got a 40% increase in sewer fees along with everyone else, and still we have trouble finding out where that money is to this day. I think the citizens had some consequences for this council. I appreciate what you do when they voted three of you in. I appreciate what you're doing. I think this is a good topic for discussion, but I think the people are tired. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Ron Roy.
Good evening, council. I just want to echo what I, echo a sentiment. I think I'm here to echo sentiment from my community, which is to let the community decide. I think I'm concerned about the lack of specifics. We've talked about the various communities we have in our city. I think they're talking about five master plan communities. I'd be much happier, and I think the residents I live with would be much happier if we had a specific mapped-out assessment of unmet needs. Because we hear all these claims about, well, we have this fire station, this library, and this school. I feel a lot better if we had, for this area, where is there a missing fire station or where there's a missing library? I think that all five communities would appreciate that. Also, I do think that when it comes to the future, again, this is kind of recurring sentiment, but the community should be involved. The residents should be involved in working with the developers. I think there's conflicts on the models of how our community should grow. You've had these models in the past, or sort of mega models, the master plan communities. One person said, "We build communities." It's almost implied that they build cities, you know, as if the people who live here don't have a say. So I do think that we need to work where the community comes up with ideas for future use. You know, maybe we might be the best voices to where a theater should go, or maybe- or maybe some kind of retail or commercial or industrial area. And maybe we should be coming up with the inventory of potential businesses for the community. Let us communicate with the developers. We're not against development. Obviously, we want retail. We want some high-quality facilities here. But I do want to say quickly that, you know, it is what it is. This wouldn't happen, and others have said this, we wouldn't have more community input if it wasn't for the city council and the fact that you're having these workshops. There's no doubt about it that we're getting a lot more opportunity as a community to speak, and I want to thank you for that. And it's a step forward. So, please give our community the chance to give our input. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comment.
We have no further speakers, but would you like to read that in? Ms. Gibbs?
Sure. We received an email addressed to the mayor, and it's from Martin L. Hanigan. And it reads, "Mayor Mike Lara, regarding the proposed growth management initiative proposed to limit the number of new residential units to 350 per year and 50 reserved for infill only. As the owner of 14.33 acres of commercial property on Second Street across from the highly successful Walmart and Home Depot, we are very concerned about this current proposed initiative to limit the residential growth of this community. We are currently working with many fine national retailers who feel the city of Beaumont would be an excellent fit for them. This excellent fit is based on projections of income, spending powers, patterns, and growth of the community. As an example, we are far down the line with an agreement to bring fantastic luxury cinema 10-plex to our project. However, this luxury cinema, as well as many other national retailers, looking at Beaumont factor in current demographics and the trajectory future residents who will participate in their success. Any limitation on reasonable growth is likely to see a drastic reduction in new national and local retailers looking to expand to Beaumont. We strongly object to any limits on residential growth which would deny both current and future residents of this fine community to the shopping, dining, and entertainment choices they can enjoy on a daily basis. We are confident that council and staff will guide and manage residential growth under current policy to keep the city of Beaumont's vision as a fine place to live and do business. Respectfully, Martin Hanigan."
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. We had, I think, a couple of questions for staff. One was regarding the questioning in regards to the fire station and the requirements to construct that.
The question was, "What is the criminal exposure for the council not moving forward with that?" I don't really have an answer to that question. I don't have a comment in response to that question. I respect the person that asked the question, but I don't have an answer for it.
No further public comment?
No.
With that, I will go ahead and close public comment at 8:40. Any closing comments from council?
I do.
Go ahead. Mayor Protem White?
What we're being asked to decide here tonight is, we were given four options, and unfortunately, Ms. Gibbs, I missed the third one. I was writing down the first two, and I didn't get, what was the third? First one was do nothing. Second, go ahead, read them.
These are only suggested options moving forward. The first one was do nothing. The second one is work with staff and city attorney's office to develop a growth management ordinance to be voted on by council or placed on the ballot for a vote by the electorate. The third one was address growth management issues when the city updates the general plan. And the last one was create a sphere of influence policy that addresses growth management.
Okay. This is not an easy issue to, it's not black and white, and I understand that. 10 years ago, when I moved here, we were promised the movie theater. We were promised Costco, Trader Joe's, Target. I can go on and on and on. When I first got on council here, the first month I was here, I contacted Trader Joe's, Costco, Target. And basically, the information I got from them is there's no time soon is any of that coming here to Beaumont. It doesn't mean that we can't grow economically in Redlands. The largest taxpayer there is the company I work for, and they don't care how many rooftops are in Redlands because they don't sell to people in Redlands. They sell all over the world. If we can plan for a, do a growth plan that attracts that kind of businesses, I think we can think outside of the box. Nothing, no matter what hap, first of all, if we do nothing, it doesn't matter. Because what happens is the initiative will be passed. Someone here mentioned earlier, not passed, I'm sorry, will make it to the ballot. Someone mentioned earlier that the people should determine the growth vision, and I agree. The sentiment in the community ever since this topic came up is nine to one. It really is. People are frustrated. People like myself, I, you know, we hear the comments, and they're good arguments. The argument is that, you know, a limited growth ordinance will raise home values and may price people out of the market who cannot afford. I think if the plan is done right, that that can be mitigated. But right now, what we as homeowners are finding is the CFDs and the high fees and the high mitigation fees and all the new fees that we want to charge on our new neighbors suppresses home values. I personally purchased our home for $450,000. It's worth $300,000 now. Aren't some of us who've been here 10 years waiting for Trader Joe's, Target, Costco, aren't we entitled to see some property value increase? And if you think about supply and demand, the more the supply comes, it's going to continue to suppress prices. So, I think we need to look at that. So, the argument has been made or discussion about if the citizen initiative passes, the cost it's going to inflict on the city to defend it. So, maybe we need to offer an alternative, something that's more agreeable with the stakeholders. So, let me ask a question of all the stakeholders here. How many of you would agree to a limit of 500 homes? How about 1,000 homes a year? Would any of you agree to 5,000 homes a year? So, my point is that at some point, there is a limit. And I think if the city wanted to try and create a backup or a competing growth ordinance, it's going to be very difficult because, again, there's, the only people who really are interested in managing the balanced growth here are the citizens. And we learned on Monday that they don't trust us. They don't trust the government. And they aren't going to trust us to do a general plan that's going to address all the needs. Moreno Valley, we are what Moreno Valley was 10 to 15 years ago. Moreno Valley continued to build homes like we're talking about to the point of not being able to provide the city services, going deeper and deeper in the hole, to the point where they are willing to accept millions of square feet of warehouses because that's the only way they can raise revenue. That's what Beaumont, that's where we're headed in 10 to 15 years. Politicians are normally short-sighted. Normally, they think about the next election or the next higher office. That's what's wrong with politicians. We need to be thinking about 10 to 20 years, time when I'm not, may not even be alive or let alone be here in Beaumont or both. But for us not to at least understand that for the next five to seven years, there's uncontrolled growth, nothing that anyone's going to do to stop it. And to put an ordinance in place that we can start planning for five to seven years from now when the ordinance starts to manage and balance the growth, I think is the more responsible thing that we should be doing as politicians.
Thank you for your comment. Mayor Protem White? Councilmember Roscoe?
This issue encompasses a lot of different aspects, and one of them is economics and how we go about solving this, finding solutions other than, you know, non-creative solutions. We've had the opportunity, and, you know, I'm honored for the council too. I'm glad our council has come together and decided we needed an economic development committee. Those are the types of things that we need to do. I know for myself, I've been actively involved in trying to recruit and talking to folks and working, you know. My experience on the chamber here in Riverside has allowed me to make communications and connections with the big retailers, to work with them, Costcos and the Home Depots and the Lowes. And they're looking for opportunity. And if we don't sell ourselves with the opportunity, we're not going to do it. It's not about rooftops. It does, but there are other aspects into it. And, you know, I've had communications with them, and they do, they are interested. But they want to see us, right now, we're in a situation that's too early. I think responsible leaders, not politicians, responsible leaders, need to be looking at all aspects and considerations when we're looking at our situation. And our situation is, we're not ready to make that a sudden move either way. And we need to allow our consultants that we approved for, that we went out to look and to interview, and we brought them in to do a job. We need to allow them to do their job, to find out where we at, exactly where we're at. And then, at that point, move to the next step on making a general plan that needs to be updated, that involves all stakeholders. I think that's the most responsible way for us to go. You know, as for this initiative, I'm all about the democratic process. I mean, I'm a government teacher. I, you know, I want the community, the citizens, which I'm a citizen here too, to allow that process to go. Allow the citizens to collect signatures. Allow them to go out there and have the community say yes or no and bring that to the council to say, "Okay, we've done our due process. Here we go. This is what the sentiment of the community is. I'm okay with that." That's a democratic process. That's responsible. That gives us, gives the council and our staff to do the responsible thing and do our homework. And if it comes to it, which I think it's, again, the most responsible thing for us to do, is to take that data that we paid for and sit down with all the stakeholders. When I say stakeholders, correct me if I'm wrong, it involves the community first, the citizens here, right? Everybody that's involved, our school district, all the agencies, the water district, regionally as well, as well as, of course, our staff that helps us make those decisions so we can move forward. I mean, it's going to be a huge effort. I mean, that's how I feel as for, I think, commenting on the initiative itself or voting on it. That's not appropriate for us to do at this point, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Knight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For myself, from what I see, I think that there's an issue that we're not recognizing within our community. And when we have our homeowners come forward and they say our infrastructure hasn't been done. Well, in the newer developments, the infrastructure was done prior to those houses going in. Our issue, I do believe that, and because of the loss of the redevelopment from the state of California, where we had those monies set and projects set forward to go, where all that money got pulled back. That's, to me, when I look at, one of the real issues is how are we going to fix our older roads? Because you cannot use CFD monies for those old roads. And all that old, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong. So, we're going to, in order to make our citizens happy and understand, I mean, we've got some roads that are just awful. But the monies have been taken from the state, took those monies. So, that's another issue that I'm looking at here, that we need to get an understanding in our community of where we can and can't spend certain monies. And we need to figure out how to deal with this. It's one more problem on our plate, I realize that. But I think that there's a misconception in the community. And when people say, "Where did my money go?" Well, it went into new infrastructure, but it did not go into the older parts of the community. So, on that note, I do, I'm done.
Thank you.
You're done, all right.
Councilmember Condon?
Someone spoke about the infrastructure and spoke about a list. I would like to see a list of some of the infrastructure needs that we have that are not being met. I think we need to separate myth from reality and know exactly where we stand on the issue of infrastructure. And I appreciated Councilwoman Knight's comments about that.
Can we make, we need a consensus on that? I would...
I think that's already in the works.
I thought so. Okay. I think we need to be very careful. I agree that one of the speakers had talked about the short-sightedness of an initiative like this. We also haven't spoken about the business owners that are in the city that have invested their money and their future in customers that would be coming from the city. So, we have citizens, we have business owners, we have developers who are also invested in this community. We have commercial landholders that are also invested. So, this is not something that I think we can, obviously, we don't take it lightly, but we can't be quick to move forward with something like this. One of the things I've thought about, and I, I'm sure smarter people than I can figure it out, but limiting the growth and not, without adding any more money or any CFDs, yet expecting the infrastructure to grow, I'm not sure how that's supposed to occur. I think we need to make some revisions. I think Mr. Bush had mentioned looking at different financial options. I think including finances into a general plan is extremely, is a great idea, something I hadn't heard of before. So, I think there are options out there that will help us sustain a livable community. And I think it's going to take a number of stakeholders to comment on and have input from. I think, I agree, working with the water district is going to be critical as well. So, I would hate to move into something where we're going to be short-sighted and not look at long-term effects. That's my comment. And do we have a motion on one of the options?
Well, you can certainly give staff direction if you want to have a further meeting on a particular option or to further discuss this. But really, the intent of the meeting tonight was just to have the information provided to you, maybe get some direction if you wanted us to move forward at the staff level with one of the options, exploring them. But other than that, it was to receive and file the report that was provided to you tonight.
I move to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file.
Do you have a motion by Knight, second by Mayor Protem White, to receive and file? Take a roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Mayor Protem White?
Yes.
Mayor Lada?
Yes. We'll adjourn the meeting at, or the workshop at, looks like 8:55. Thank you for coming.